Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Monday, November 10th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Please join me in a salute to flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members. Counselor Argenzio.
Here.
Here, Counselor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Counselor Janino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Grino Swaya.
Here.
Here, Counselor Haas.
Here.
Here, Counselor Herramio.
Here.
Here, Counselor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Noposelski.
Here.
Here, Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Counsel President Silvestri.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of October 27?
All in favor, all opposed? So what? Madam Clerk, I'm requesting a suspension of rules. On a suspension of rules, all in favor, all opposed?
Yeah.
Yes.
Rules are suspended to take up calendar item number 13. Motion presented by Counselor Herramio that the City Council award a certificate of commendation to Sebastian Agudelo Gomez for his exemplary contribution to educating and informing the residents of Riviera and representing the Colombian-American community with integrity and distinction here in the largest Colombian-American community in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Counselor Herramio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for all the leeway for this particular item. I will, I just wanted to, I'm not feeling well and I'm gonna head out, but I wanted to take this up so that for the next council meeting, I'll say all my words about Sebastian, but he's an exemplary person that helps educate our community. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselors. Any other Counselors? And while we're on the suspension of rules, can we take up the communication with Parking Director?
Late communication, calendar item number 14. Communication with the Parking Director requesting approval of the annual Toys for Tickets Amnesty Program and the Stay in Shop Local Sundays Saturday Program.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Council. Probably the most exciting my year, each year. This is, will be our sixth annual Toys for Tickets Amnesty Program. Looking for the blessing of the Council. This program allows the Parking Department to remove up to $30 per violation brought to us for a toy of equal value, up to five tickets at maximum. In conjunction with this program, we also like to do a little holiday shopping incentive where we exempt metered rates or need to pay a parking meter on the Saturdays leading up to Christmas, including Black Friday, the Saturday after Black Friday. Hoping for the blessing, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer it. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Any Counselors? Counselor Cogliandro? Oh, okay. Any City Counselors? Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Director. This is a wonderful program, and I hope we get lots of toys for kids that need them. And I'm gonna do my part, but I'm happy to see you up here promoting this, and let's hope we do real well this year. Thank you.
Thank you for the kind words, Counselor.
Thank you. Any other Counselors? All in favor, all opposed? So what?
Thank you, everyone.
We just have to bring up this presentation for Mr. Polly, who's next, but we're after obviously the same issue.
Okay. Are we still on the suspension of rules? Name and address?
Okay, got it. Honorable Chair Chairman and City Council Members, thank you, thank you for having me here. My name is Wamship Aley, and I graduated from Northeastern University two years back studying applied machine intelligence, and I currently work as a data processing engineer for State of Maryland Department of Health. So I'm so passionate about the data and the data-centric solution, so I have created a website called Riviera.City. So this is to help the governance for the Counselors and for the people of Riviera. The reason why I built this because one day I was trying to search the data regards to Riviera, but I found that the entire data is scattered on very different resources because it's understandable. There are various types of datas that has been, you know, split across federal data, state-level data, and city-level data. But I couldn't find a single resource where we can gather all of the details in a single platform, so that's why I have developed this AA Civic Data Platform where you would be able to grab all of the details and have a single point of solution for that. Okay, so, and, so while I was going through the city budget document, it was like 257 pages, and it's very hard to read through, and so what I did was I created a solution which can answer any question regards to the city budget, and all you have to do is just ask the question in a natural language, and it would be getting the answers for you. And not only that, so we have the data from, you know, State Department and the Health Department and the federal data and various levels of data, right? I have come in all of these datas into a single platform and single website where you can just go to the website and click on the respective departments to get the information. And not only that, recently we also have Riviera Police Data Information. So what it does is like every day you can get the real-time insights. So you can ask in the website, hey, what happened in the last week in Riviera? Then you would be able to get the answers like, hey, there was certain type of incident happen, and there are police responded to that event. You would be able to get the, what are the different percentages of events that happened in the last week for the police department, so whether it might be five departments, and any other issue, you'd be able to get insights for that. And, next slide, please. So, yeah, so there are various different ways to, you know, interact with the website. You can just use your voice and ask the question like, hey, what's the, what's happening with the Wonderland Project, right? So it will get the data from the city budget document, and likewise you can ask about what's the weather for Riviera, and what's the transportation, how many schools are there in Riviera, and various, et cetera, details. So basically, AI is gonna process all of the 12 departments data which is available, so I gathered from the US Census Bureau and MBTA data and various departments, so you're gonna, you're gonna get the answers for that. Not only just information, you're gonna get the state-of-the-art visualization charts. Those are the best in the industry where you would be able to understand the data with a single view. And likewise, the updates were real-time. For example, as I mentioned, each and every day, our Riviera Police Department publishes new data every day, so it's gonna fetch the recent, new data, and it's gonna provide you the chart, which I can show it here in the chat website, but we can go ahead with the next slide, please. So these are the example questions that you can ask with a chat board, like what are the most common types of incidents in my neighborhood, and what's the median house for incoming in Riviera, and when's the next Blue Line train? And the interesting part about this website is like, I have made the MBTA sub-page where you can get the, each and every train data, like made into a chart. Let's say like if you find like from Wonderland to Riviera Beach, you could see the chart. If there is any, you know, delay in two minutes, you would be able to see the spike in the chart, and you would be able to get the all relevant data. So the entire MBTL line data is with the website, and you will be, you'll be able to get the very nuanced information where you won't be, you won't be getting the data unless you go to the MBTA directly. Next slide, please. And coming to the data verification, I know the most important question the Council might have, like how accurate is the data? So for this, I'm using resources from Riviera. So one of the main resources is like a city budget document, and the second one is MBTA data, and third one is US Census Bureau, and fourth one, and it's a state-level information that we have, and various information that we have. And, next slide, please. So for this, it took a couple of months for me to have this done. So it has like 50,000 plus of lines of code, and there were like eight data resources, and for this to be done, it might, it would be costing around 200K for the city to implement, and 75K to have the infrastructure cost for that for a year, but it was done for free. And, and also have done the case study for the various different cities in the country, so including the San Francisco area, Silicon Valley, Boston, New York City. No other city has all of the data points in a single, in a single platform. So if you're able to have this picked up, this would be the first in the entire United States to have the state-of-the-art solutions as per the 2025, 2026 standards for the civic transparency. Next slide, please. As you can see here, so this is a differentiation factor when compared to other cities. It has a unified semantic search, and the rest of the cities mostly doesn't have the AI integrated. Maybe they might have a chat box or something, but we want to have inter-semantic search for it, and most of the tools doesn't have no voice interfaces. This includes San Jose, San Francisco Bay area cities as well, and, yeah, can we go to the next slide, please? I'm, what I'm requesting the Council for is like, the reason why I'm doing this because Counselors, as you are the lawmakers, you deserve to have the best of the data available for you, because AI is just a tool, but we need a transparency so that Counselors can make a better decisions, because it's up to the humans to make the decisions, not to the AI. So, but what it can do, what it excels at best is to have the better, better information insights, so that's what I'm trying to provide. Have the insights provided to you so that you will be much more informed about what's happening with our city, and it's up to the City Council to make the decisions. So I'm just requesting for, you know, to have, you know, acknowledgement of the, this website, and to have the backing to the Riviera.org website, and what I'm interested is Counselors, like, there are many, many things that we can actually improve to provide the data transparency, not just to the residents, as I said, like to the Counselors. Let's say like, there are many factors. Let's say like we have 311 data, right? So for the governors, what I believe is like, rather than being a reactive system, it's better if you have a proactive system, because if you find the issues much way forward than, you know, something becomes worse, it would be best for us to be in a best reactive-based system. So that's what I'm striving for. So I'm requesting if we can have like six months of trial period where we can actually have this website, have the data, and have, just go via your validation, trying to, try to see like, if there are any certain type of information that we can provide so that Council can make a better decisions for any aspects in the various departments. So that's what I'm requesting for, so because we can integrate 311 services as well so that a city might have much more better insights as well. Next slide, please. Yeah, so, so, yeah, as we all know, like in the late 19th century, through a former DCR, Riviera became the United States' first public beach, so it, that was then, so we also have the chance now to become one of the most transparent. Even though we are small, it's, that doesn't prevent, prevented us from becoming one of the first good initiatives the city has taken previously, so likewise we can also become the one of the most transparent city in the states. So, yeah, that's all I have. Thank you so much. Yes, okay, perfect. Okay, so this is a city dashboard that we can see. So over here, we have various departments over on the left, and can you please click on, scroll down? Yeah, so those, these are the various charts. So if you click on each chart, you will be able to get the, what are the numbers for it? And these are the, over the years, data for the budgeting, split via various departments. Yeah, and... Right, so, can we go to the MBTA section, please? MBTA section on the left? Yeah, so you could see the spike, right? So there was a two minutes of delay from MBTA station from, that's Wonderland to Riviera Beach at, I couldn't see the time, but, yeah. So you can change the different, we have various different stations in the Blue Line, right? So we can change the stations, and likewise we'll get the accurate information from the MBTA pipeline. So, you can click on any of that, so those are the graphs of the various train details. Can you please come down, please? Scroll down. So these are the various line details, and you could also see the various maintenance details. Let's say like some of the elevators are not working, you'd be able to see over here. Can you please scroll down? Scroll down, please. So those are the maintenance details that you have over here. So, so one spot for all MBTA related to the Blue Line. You don't have to go anywhere else, you will be getting, so not only for the current day, you would be able to go back in the time and see, let's say like 13 days back, if you wanna see any delays between Riviera Beach to Wonderland, you would be able to do so. Can we go to a different tab, please? AI Insights, AI Insights on top? Just a bit, AI Insights? Yeah. So over here, so this is AI Agent, so AI read entire city budget document, you could see various departments over there, various categories. Those are the insights. You'd be able to see how much cost per person in Riviera for any funding effort that we have through the city budget document. Can you please click on any of the category, please? Any random? Right, so you could see over here, like per percent cost, and how much percent of the budget that might constitute. So, yeah, and if you see on the bottom, you could see the reference to which part of the budget document it was getting the information from. Let's say like it mentions some source, certain page number and the line number, you'd be able to, you know, trace back to the city budget document and get the insight. Can we also go to the housing details, please? So these are intuitive charts for, you know, housing details. You could see what are the trends for city of Riviera? Can we scroll down, please? This was data from me, but you could see like where other people leaving from. So for this part, I got the information from aggregators like Redfin, Zillow. If you have city-based information, like a city-based information, that would be much better. Can we please go to police logs, please? Right. So this was the police logs I was talking about. So this has entire data about, from the police department, so you could see the, what are the call distribution types? We have other type, and fire, and various categories over here. You could see the chart, what are the trends that's happening throughout the days from the police department. And if you also see like, what's the peak hour? So our police department gets most of the calls at 2:00 PM. You could see over there, like half of 14. So this is chart on a 24-hour graph. You could see, we usually get most number of calls from the police department at 2:00 PM, unless during the late night. Can you scroll down, please? And you could also see like weekly trends, monthly trends, and can we click on the Riviera Beach Boulevard first bar chart, bottom? Yeah, first one, yes. Any one of them, yeah. So you can see over here, what type of, on which street we have more type of, more police locks from, and you can subcategories, okay? Is it, so if you click on the Riviera Beach Boulevard, you would see most of them that needs attention come back to other streets, because other streets might have more complaints about loud noise, but the Riviera Beach Boulevard has a little bit of crime data or something. So that's where we can get the information about the various different streets on a streetwise basis. So this is the real-time data that we are fetching from Riviera Police Logs. Can we scroll down, please? Okay, so this is an interesting chart, so you could see like how different type of logs that, that's been evolving over the days. So can we click on October 28th? On the chat? October 28th on the chat, like graph? Graph? Yeah, on the top. On, on the chat, please, yeah. October 28th, that's perfect. The one with more orangish, little bit of left? Yeah, even more left. 26? Yeah, okay, yeah, 26. So you can see over here, like the more number of disturbances happened on 26 because there was Friday, so that makes sense, so that's why we have more police complaints with the noise, noise complaint. So likewise, you can see the trend of various type of police logs that we're having in the city. And if you could see, like, we also have actual logs, like with the police details over here. These are the, each and every individual entry that we have. Okay, so. And, so, next thing I want to show is, can we also open the chat board on the bottom right? With, yeah. So can we ask a question like, can you give me? Let me check, real quick. Can you, can you provide me last week's policy data? Okay, so can we expand that, please, if you need, if you want? Okay, it's okay. So you could see over here, you're able to see the split between the various type of reports that happened in the last week, the percentage was, and what happened, and you could see in the bottom, where are you getting this data? Like citation, citation is more important for the accuracy, so just to make sure we're not hallucinating the data. So, so that's, so, like, you can also use the voice mode to ask your questions, and I'm saying it for sure, we can obviously can find the data like for much more better data sources, but this is a chat board for that. We can close this. And can we scroll up, please? Can we click on Health Indicators? Health, yeah. So for this, we got the data from Census Bureau, so we could see on the bottom, we do have charts where we can, you know, you have a split of data between various categories. So likewise, we have many of the charts, like, it's gonna take a lot of time to demonstrate all of the features, but that's a summary of it, so we'll be able to get information and insights for many data points, and likewise, we can also include, if the City Council is interested, how much more visible insights, we can obviously can include 311, and anything the Council that seems, that's valuable for the committee to make a better decisions. So, yeah, that's all I have. Thank you so much, Counsel.
Thank you. That was great. Any Counselors? Counselor Kelly?
Thank you so much, Mr. Polly, for coming here, for approaching me and, you know, allowing me to see this, and then coming in and giving your presentation tonight. I think this would be a valuable, very valuable tool. It's a wealth of information, and it makes it so accessible to everyone, not just us as Counselors, but residents in the city as well. So I just wanted to just confirm something in your presentation that I saw. So in other words, I think what you were saying is that if this technology were being used, it would be roughly at a cost of about $275,000 a year for the technology, and you're offering it to us for free. Is that correct?
Right, so just for the part that was made so far, so that's gonna cost about 200K, I mean, like, in a, like typical software engineering cost that we have, and 75K for rough estimates of the infrastructure billing, so that's what it is, yeah. 25, that's right.
And is this something that then, I think, we could, what I would like to suggest is that possibly, I know we probably have to have a bigger discussion, maybe we could go into a subcommittee with it or something, I don't know, I'm open to suggestions, but maybe if it were decided that it's something that we wanted to pursue, maybe have it available or accessible for a six-month trial basis?
Right.
And see, you know, if we really think the benefit is there? And then, you know, do it on a more permanent basis if that seemed to be the case. But I think it provides a ton of information, specifically, I think it could provide help with the budget, because it can be daunting. So I think it would be great. So thank you so much for your presentation and for getting in touch with me, and for coming in this evening, and I know probably other members of the Council have questions for you as well, so I'll let them ask their questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kelly. So thank you for, you know, for responding for my email, and thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Janino?
Thank you for coming tonight. There's a lot of information, a lot of knowledge there. I went through it this afternoon a little bit. I did some looking into it, letter reading. I had a problem with the, trying to figure out where the information came from. When I was looking, I was trying to find the pages, references, cross-references on it.
Yes.
And if it was put in, you know, all just all past data put in, current data put in, or how it was put in there? I also noticed the police log on there, the Vabish Parkway calls. You had a higher number of calls, which someone from outside said, look at that, would say, wow, Vabish Parkway, who'd wanna live in that street there? But knowing the Parkway itself, the police station, and when calls go in there, that they're logged in as Vabish Parkway. So that would throw that number off on you. So, I mean, it's, it's a lot of information, a lot of data, a lot of good data on there. But I'd like to be able to cross-reference some of the stuff over.
Sure.
And, I said, when you go to the page itself, I'm not very computer savvy, so I go into it, I look at it, I poke around a little bit.
Yeah.
I'm poking around, and I'm saying, you know, this is a lot of information, a lot of good stuff in here, all good stuff. Where's it coming from? How can I cross-check it over?
Right, so...
You know, even just small points into it.
Okay. Yeah, it's, so, thank, thank you for your question. So for, as for the first one, like for police logs, right? So every day at 7:00 AM, Riviera Police Department publishes a PDF report to the website, to the Riviera Police website. So what we're doing is like we're processing the data, processing the data into a tabular format, and we're trying to extracting, extracting the information from the data provided by the police department, and we are sending that to the data pipeline so that we will be able to get the respective relevant information. So that's for the one of it, and for the rest of the data, majority of the facts came from River City, you know, budget document. So, I know, the references might be off because it was in a very different format from...
So it's basically the past data and put it in there?
Yeah.
To be reviewed, and then the current data from the department would be on the morning, updated by people that work in the office?
Yeah, yes, so if you, if you go to the Riviera Police website, you could find the, go to the police log section, you would be able to find each and every day police logs. But I'm not sure about the retention policy, it seems like they are deleting if it's 90 days old or older, so once we have the systems like this, you'll be able to have a, you know, public-owned data repository where regardless of what happens to that data, you'll be able to get the respective insights for that. So, yeah, for the police data, I'm extending from there.
Now, how about a contact for the website itself? If a citizen wanted to contact you for information? Is there a contact page on there for information, or is it just basically?
I mean, we can include that, so it's still in fancy, but I would like to consider that session, yeah, sure, I would like to include that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Grino Swaya?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your presentation. How much in real time is this data?
So, measured of the data is static, so let's consider for budget, right? That comes like yearly budget, so have to do it once. So rest of the data, the, let's say like for Census Bureau, right? So the data I found on the web, public data is as latest of 2023 for the National Census Bureau. So that's the latest as of it. But for, yeah, I would say 70% is static data and 30% is more dynamic. So that's why I'm requesting, if the city has any permission for us to have the, because I could see like most of the 3-1-1 data can be public as well. So if there is any way that we can have that included, we will be able to have much more better insights to other aspects of real-time data as well.
So that gets to my other question. How accurate is the data?
So, so, yeah, so we are presenting the data as is. So that's the reason for that we are doing citations because, so that we will be able to cross-reference to the original document where you're getting that from. For the police data, it's just, you know, we're just passing the data as is. So we're not, there is no guesswork in the facts, right? Let's say like if some person asks, in natural human language, let's like very narrow specific question like, how many pounds of sand that we have in River Beach? It's very hard for it to guess because there was no data for it. So it might be hallucinating that data at that point. So during that scenario, what we can do is, we can just give an estimate, and if not, we can just totally prohibit from answering rather, you know, rather than providing the estimate, we can just say like, we don't have that answer for that. So rather than doing the guesswork, we can do that.
Right. Because if you're guessing, then it's not accurate data and people really don't wanna know that. My other thing is, you said it was free, the 274,000 a year. But for how long is it free? The first year, the first six months, the first two months? I want upfront.
Yeah, so that's a good question. I would like to see the progress. Like for me, as current state of the website goes, I don't have any issue with the, I mean, I do have to incur the cost for the server, server maintenance and using the, like AI inference cost, like that's basically infrastructure cost for maintenance.
And how much is that?
I don't have current estimate as of now because I'm doing it from my own credit card, so I didn't actually check on that part. But I don't have a problem having it free as it, you know, currently is, so I don't have a problem in there. But my more thing is to have much more better transparency so that that might require, you know, much more data, better sources. As you have said before, how much of the data is dynamic? So we're trying to have much more dynamic data. So for that, it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna incur cost for that, but, but the website as is now, there's no cost for me, so it's zero for that.
I'm sure what you're saying, I completely understand because I think this whole idea of this AI thing is for transparency.
Transparency.
But it has to stem from you coming to us first and being completely transparent of the actual cost in the future, what it's going to cost the council, what it, I mean, what it's gonna cost the city if the council decides to go with this. And again, I wanna make sure that the information that's going out there, if people are going to access this, is as accurate as it can possibly be.
True.
Because otherwise, we're defeating the entire purpose of having this AI. And then, some of the information that you pulled up earlier, I saw, was from back, back in February. You also mentioned something about using Zillow, Zillow and the other, Reddit?
Redfin.
Redfin?
Right.
I mean, those aren't accurate either.
Yeah, so that's my counsel, like, I would like to get insights and suggestions from you so that we would strive for having much more 100% accurate and transparency. So I would like to see like if the city has a better information resources so that we can, you know, couple with that and try to get the information. So, so far what I did was, with me, I don't have any permissions for any private data, so I go, I coupled with all of the public resource data that we have so far and just want to have the council, like as you mentioned, that was a very good point, so like take a session from, on that point and to see if we can do better on that part.
Thank you. Thank you so much for answering my questions.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna say thank you for coming up here and giving us a presentation and the work that went into it was awesome. I just think that as we, we move on, you know, day by day, year by year, the technology is just gonna be, it's gonna advance. And I think maybe someday, you know, everything will be accurate. So I just wanna thank you and, you know, this is the future and so this is where we have to go. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am. I agree with that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks so much for the presentation tonight. A lot of, a lot of information on here. You know, so many people ask me, how many people are in Revere? How many, how much funding do the, do the schools get from the state? It's pretty amazing to have it at the, the touch of your finger on this. Like the fellow, my fellow councillors brought up before, accuracy is huge with something like this. We don't want residents looking up something and having it be completely false. But a lot of great data here and a lot of great information. Just wanna thank you for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, councillor. I agree with the point, like, I mean, that's a very valid question. Even I resonate with that, we have to strive for accuracy. So, so that's why I was, I'm here with you councillors so that if you have a path forward, we can make, we can try to have much more accurate data, we can get the accurate data storage and also the proper regress testing. So only that, so that's why I requested for a six-month trial period where we can, you know, just see like how it goes and, yeah, you see the pilot program.
Can I ask one more thing? Thank you. And so you said you got the information, the data from the census, the MBTA?
Yes.
And the city budget?
And city budget and River Police Department.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors? Permission to speak from the chair?
When you mentioned earlier about revere.org, would you have to somehow implement with our system, within our, our system here at City Hall? How could that possibly impact the security of our system? And is there gonna be an updated cost to us to integrate the two?
So for that, for that task, it was just asking for, you know, just to have the backlink, just like I mentioned, like, you know, independent data source program, just like I mentioned in the website where all you have to do is just click on the website. So there's no connectivity between the both websites, it's just like, we have the link over the website so that, you know, if users are interested in the, you know, beta phase, we're not saying like this is completely polluted yet, but it's in a beta. We can also have a disclaimer like, see, it's in the prototype phase, it can make mistakes. So you can make it as a definitive, but it's in a prototype phase. So we can just have a link reference. That might not cost anything for whoever is maintaining the website. All, all they have to do is like a change of 10 lines of code, so that shouldn't be an issue if the city council approves, yeah.
Okay. Councillor?
I think we'd probably wanna have further discussion regarding this. So I think if we maybe discussed it in a subcommittee, I'm not sure which subcommittee would be appropriate, so I'm open to suggestions for that. And maybe even have, invite our IT department?
I was thinking George, yeah.
And, you know, have a broader discussion with them and get some insight from them. So I'm not sure about which subcommittee, if someone wants to suggest one.
I think there's a technic, isn't there a tech subcommittee now? Wasn't ones created something in technology?
Well, I'm kinda think what's left on available for the rest of the year.
Mr. President?
Councillor?
Thank you. Is this our decision if this gets implemented?
Definitely not.
So then why are we bothering putting it into a subcommittee? This is a great presentation, it's a great website, we should forward this to the administration. We should, this is not something that we can vote on. If it, when it comes down to the money that we will potentially owe, yes, that will be something that will be in the budget, but I don't think we should be putting this anywhere but with the administration, just procedurally.
Mr. President?
Councillor?
You know, I think this is, this, I'm impressed with the presentation, it's very nice. This is the future, as one of my colleagues said. You know, this is something that if we want, we put a motion in to have the mayor, the administration look into the possibility of putting an RFP out for this. It's, you know, this is, this was great information, but there's a long way to go with this. I don't know, we could have a subcommittee to discuss how we wanna present it to the administration, but it really has to come from the administration, it has to be an RFP, has to, we have to be protected and protect the vendors and so forth and so on. So I don't know where we go from here, but it, it's a good start. Thank you for coming up.
Thank you, sir.
I would go along with councillor Cogliandro's suggestion if that's...
Mr. President, through you, it just, you know, we're kind of the middleman here, you know, so send it right to the guy or the people that are gonna make the decision. It's not to say that this isn't a good idea, just, you know, get it out of our hands so we can get to the right people is essentially what I'm saying, so that's all. Thank you, councillors.
All in favor, all opposed?
There's no motion for it. And what's the motion say?
Motion to request that the mayor, I don't know.
Consider, consider an RFP or do some research or whatever.
Consider an RFP to implement revere.city...
Prototype?
What's that?
Prototype, pilot program.
For a trial basis, to have it available for a trial basis, something like along that. That the mayor, that the mayor be requested to investigate an RFP for revere.city prototype?
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Thank you, thank you very much, councillors. My privilege. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir, chairman. Thank you.
Unfinished business, calendar item number four, in ordinance repealing section 9.12030, posting political signs of the Revere revised ordinances. This is the third reading.
Councillor Cogliandro?
I mean, at this point, you know, disagreeing with this is disagreeing with the Constitution and the United States Supreme Court. I've beat a dead horse on this one, so.
Roll call on the third reading?
Councillor Genzio?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Greenos Swaya?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Haremio is absent. Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novoselfski?
No.
No, councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and councillor President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, there's an objection on the third reading, table two, the next meeting. Next up is the Economic Development Subcommittee Report.
Councillor Greenos Swaya?
Okay, the first motion was 24-130. The 15-minute grace period was reported out favorably, so I would bring it to the council for a favorable vote.
All in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
So ordered.
Motion 24-256 was taken out of order. Presentation by Tom was good, even though the equipment wasn't working at the time. This was about Broadway and it is placed on file till the next council term. Motion 25-032, the satellite dishes was also placed on file. And motion 25-271, the economic development initiatives, was an excellent presentation and it was also placed on file. Thank you.
Thank you. Calendar item 678 will be placed on file.
Calendar item number nine, communication from the city assessor requesting a public hearing for the purpose of establishing the minimum residential factor for FY26.
City assessor here? Okay, this will be going to a public hearing.
I spoke with Chairman Branca Forti this, this afternoon and he recommended December 1st to have enough time to prepare. Calendar item number 10, motions. Motion presented by councillor McKenna, that the city council request AFC Urgent Care located at 339 Squire Road to appear before the city council to conduct a presentation on the healthcare needs and services provided.
Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of weeks ago, I wasn't feeling good, so I was looking for a place to go. I didn't wanna go to the emergency, so I wanted to go to urgent care. And I was thinking about going up to Davis and then I Googled it and I was surprised that there was an urgent care at North Gate Shopping Center. I had no idea. When I walked in, it was empty. And so I asked the receptionist, why is it empty? And she said, no one knows it's here. So, and so I talked to the, the person in charge and she said she's currently servicing Revere firefighters with free screening, hot screening. She's servicing Revere school kids. So I'm trying to get her to come up here so she can talk a little bit about her urgent care and get the residents of Revere to know that it's here, it's there. It's been there for a year and I had no idea. So if I don't know, a lot of people don't know either. So I'd like to have her come up and talk about her care and what she's doing servicing the people of Revere. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Great motion by councillor McKenna. My children have been there twice in probably the last two weeks, but it's, it's incredible to have a facility like that right here in our city. We don't have to travel, you know, 20 minutes, you know, a half hour, but they're doing great work there and I'm excited to hear what, what else they, they offer. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors? Councillor Janino?
Excellent motion, councillor. Can I bend it twice myself? Thank you.
Any other city councils? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 11, motion presented by councillor Cogliandro, that the city administration and school administration provide the city council with a comprehensive written report detailing the jurisdictional responsibilities over school property, including the areas and matters under control of the city, the areas and matters under the control of the school department, and any other departments or entities that hold jurisdiction or authority over school property.
Councillor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President. As we all know, we voted unanimously last meeting to place a memorial plaque at the new early childhood education playground at the Lincoln School. It was voted unanimously and then it was turned down by the superintendent, pretty much saying we didn't have the purview to vote this in. What was worse is an email went out saying, don't make any memorials and don't talk about it. And I am, I'm actually kinda beside myself that there was no collaboration with the city council or the city or anything on a memorial for this young man. When a young man battles leukemia and still has a, a great attitude and lights up a room and gives everything he has, he deserves to be recognized. And I'm not sure why the superintendent turned it down, other than it wasn't within our purview. So I, I don't get it. I wanna know for, for the future, how we can proceed with dedicating things that are on school property? Who has jurisdiction and where, as it stated in the, the motion? I, my heart goes out to Chris's family because this would have been awesome and I apologize to them, but we're, I'm not letting this one go. That young man is gonna get something and I hope you'll all support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I don't know, councillor Cogliandro, if you were on the, the council or not, but a couple of years ago, we had a student from Revere High School. He got shot or stabbed on Revere Beach in front of Twist and Shake. And his friends came up to the council and asked to put... the city council or the city or anything on a memorial for this young man. When a young man battles leukemia and still has a, a great attitude and lights up a room and gives everything he has, he deserves to be recognized. And I'm not sure why the superintendent turned it down, other than it wasn't within our purview. So I, I don't get it. I want to know for, for the future, how we can proceed with dedicating things that are on school property, who has jurisdiction and where, as it's stated in the, the motion. My heart goes out to Chris's family, because this would have been awesome, and I apologize to them, but we're, I'm not letting this one go. That young man is going to get something, and I hope you'll all support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I don't know, Counselor Cogliandro, if you were on the, the council or not, but a couple of years ago, we had a student from Rivier High School, he got shot or stabbed on Rivier Beach in front of Twist and Shake, and his friends came up to the council and asked to put a mural on the Lincoln School in the basketball court because Eunice always played basketball there, and it was denied. And the reason why it was denied, and I think, I, if I'm not sure, I don't remember, but I don't know if Superintendent Kelly came up and she said that she just doesn't want to make the schools memorials. So, and I think that, and it just died in the water. So I'm not sure where this is, but I'm supporting you, I'm definitely supporting the motion, but that was the reasoning why. So I just wanted to tell you a little history. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna? I'm sorry, Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. We don't look alike. I'm laughing, but I'm not, I'm not pleased with this response from the superintendent. You know, it appears that the city council is only good to be bullied into funding a high school. And, you know, I've had it with the tactics of the superintendent, and I'm saying that publicly, because this is a disgrace to turn down this memorial for this young man and to, and to pull this jurisdiction stuff. God bless her coming up here again for funding, because I'm not going to be too quick to do it. So I'm very angry about this, and I'm not going to say anymore because I might say something that's not polite. So this, this is a disgrace to turn this down and to pull this jurisdiction stuff when, when we just funded a half a billion dollar high school, and it's going to go up.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President, for the leeway. I, my colleague to my left, Counselor Haas, just informed me that the bench for Richie Santaswasso that we just approved is getting done, it was approved by the mayor's office. So I don't know what the problem is here. And if they're worried about memorials, the name of the school is Abraham Lincoln, you know, I, I'm not really, so I, I just thank you for the support, everybody.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 12, motion presented by Counselor Haas, that the city council award the Rivier Junior Patriots Flag Football Team for its undefeated season, which concluded with the championship at the NCYFC 2025 Flag Football Tournament on November 1.
Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to save my comments for the night the certificates are awarded. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Council President, I neglected to add public comment to the agenda, the council would like to take that up.
Okay, so we will take up public comment. If anyone here would like to speak on anything on the agenda, please come up, name, address, you have two minutes to speak on anything on the agenda. Rivier business owners and residents. Anyone here for public comment? Hearing and seeing none? Back to regular order of business.
Late motion, calendar item number 15, motion presented by Council President Silvestri, that the mayor request the chief of police to provide the city council with an update on the use of body cameras for officers to include cost and expected start time.
Motion speaks for itself. We are one of the few cities in the area that don't have them. I know there was a cost with storage of, of the, the cameras, and just looking for an update. Motion speaks for itself. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. That concludes tonight's business.
Mr. President?
Counselor?
Just pointing for personal privilege and information, tomorrow is Veterans Day.
Oh, you just stole it, thanks.
And I wish everybody would recognize it. I'm disappointed that a lot of businesses still work on federal holiday, and, but I want to wish everybody, all our veterans, happy Veterans Day. And I do want to thank everybody that participated in the Rivier Veterans Day Dinner Dance last night. We had over 170 people attend with 30 people from the Veterans Home in Chelsea, and it was an outstanding evening. And for those who, who made donations to the event, we thank you very much. Al Terminello and I have been running this for 20 years, and we're proud of it, I'm glad we started it, and hopefully we'll continue it. And with the help of everybody here, it'll help pay for some of the veterans' meals that were attended last night. So thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you, Counselor, and happy birthday to the Marine Corps, 250 birthday to your MC. Have a good night.